A pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amendments to the agenda.
One amendment today. We'd like to add a water and sewer allocation to, under new business, for Sherman v. Allen.
Okay.
Motion for that? Is there any other ones?
There's none.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to add water and sewer to, under new business.
All right. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Done. Approval of the minutes of February 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 9th, as written.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any additions, deletions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Last meeting, you should be doing all this.
Well, that's why I was looking over to Jay, see if he wanted to.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, five minutes for public comment. To publics.
Hi, public.
Can't do a lot of doing publics, so.
A lot of people can't, Johnny.
That's why they make those rules. Okay, we'll move on. If something comes up, please let me know. Department head reports, department heads are you?
Or me. All right, we'll start, uh, we'll start with what DPW sent over tonight. They're busy beating back the, uh, the snow and freezing rain we had last week still. We had a little bit of trouble with those sidewalks because of that, because of the ice. But I think they've got them cleaned up pretty good now.
Yeah.
They are, it's, that ice was thick. We did have a truck down, the big green machine. That one is throwing exhaust codes and shutting the truck down. It was towed to the shop and they found a, I think what he said was an exhaust heater, something that warms up the exhaust as it goes out. So they're hoping to get that back on the road before the weekend, just in case we have any more snow. That's what they've been fighting with. Water plant's been doing well. They're monitoring that leak that's coming out of the inlet tube, the tunnel. No changes, no changes in that, same amount of water's been coming out, so that's, that's good news. For sewer, we did have the pre-bid meeting last week, last Thursday, for the wastewater plant upgrade. There may have been five contractors there. We find out who wins that bid early March, I want to say March 4th. We do have a mandatory pre-bid meeting this week, Thursday, for the pump stations. There's been a lot of interest in that, in those projects, so we'll see what comes out of that. For the police department, only one arrest in the last couple of weeks. They have increased their foot patrols around the apartments down on Main Street because of the increased traffic in and out of the buildings. We've got a few complaints. They're revamping the holding cell. They're gonna expand some space just on the other side of the cell so they can put in the new electronic fingerprint. I was gonna say reader, but the thing that electronically takes your fingerprints. I don't know what you call that. But they received a grant last year for that, so they're, they're moving forward with that. And they installed, finally, we, with that COVID money, they got two new computers, they installed those, finally, down there, too. Moving on to town manager. Surprisingly, just kind of chipping away at, at the projects we've had. Last week was a tou, yeah, last week, last week was a tou, tough week. We had two sewer lines plugged, which, the reason it's tough is just, is because people called asking for help and there really wasn't anything we could do. They were private sewer lines. I talked to the contractors. In one case, it was paper products jammed in the sewer line, in the other case, it was tree roots.
So it was up to the homeowner?
Yeah. Homeowner responsible.
Is that on our name, the tree roots?
Yes, it was. Yep. Pet mayor's coming along, that's exciting. On the second, the recreation director, Nicole, will take the ballot box around to the, the kids in school, instead of having the kids come to us for, for the election. Mayor Murphy's currently fundraising for the dog park. There is a new GoFundMe.
Is there any chain link still down in the town?
I asked Aaron, we had a whole bunch of it. It's buried in the snow.
Well, that's, that's no problem, but I mean, I thought we did.
Yeah, we did, we had a whole bunch.
That would be a perfect place for that.
Yep. We talked sidewalks, sewer plugs. The kickoff meeting for the lights in the park and then the park and ride refurbishment, that meeting is on March 3rd. So that project is finally moving underway. Everything else is just kind of, kind of slowly dragging along. I talked to the engineer about the firehouse beam, he's drafted those, uh, those plans. There was a question about the slope of the floor upstairs, but the architect didn't see any trouble with that, so, uh, other than that. And salt should have permitted, so, or is being permitted, so we're chugging right along, I guess.
There's no potential problem with the salt shed? When we talked about that the other night, about?
No, they, uh...
What, land?
I think they will, if in the next 10 years, the town does decide to put a garage there, I think there will be a big fuss. But at the end of the day, I mean, they have to follow the rules, just like we do, so. Plus, there's a lot of folks that want to see our garage moved away from, from the flood zone. And there's money there to buy, to buy up some land and put it in conservation, so that, it really does lean in our favor. We're the good, like I told them at the state, we're the good guys, like you shouldn't make it hard for us. We're trying to get all that waste up and away from the river.
Right.
So. And that, that's pretty much all I got.
Questions for the town manager? Old business, nothing.
Not new business.
Okay, we'll move on to new business.
Got some chairs, if you want some?
Okay, water and sewer connection for application with 30 South Main, that's good news.
Yeah. The, the engineer sent a request just after the last meeting. He's requesting reconnection to the 30 South Main property. They're gonna, they want to build a single family out there.
Good. Are they going up on top?
They wanna, so, the way I understood it, I think he wants to put a garage, uh, you know, on the lower level, yeah, and then build up top so we have a drive-in garage, which is, that's perfect.
Sure is.
Yeah.
It's nice up there, it really is. I mean, it could, it's got a lot of potential, little cleanup, that's all it needs, yeah.
So I have an approval from the board, the applicant did not pay the fees yet, so, but they wanted to get their approval in so they could start construction and then talk to the state.
What are, what are their fees for reconnection? There shouldn't be any?
The $2 one-time fee, I, I didn't think was applicable because it's a single family to a single family on the same property, so it's just, it's not a change of use.
Are they in the same hookups that were there?
Yes. There is a $110 fee for both sewer and water for this, uh, this application, and then a $10 application, I'm sorry, an inspection fee for water, an inspection fee for sewer, and then a $10 application fee.
Is that what the $110 is?
It, it comes to $230.
What's the $110 for?
$110 for inspection, for the water, a hundred, another $110 for sewer.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a fee to hook up, it's just to have somebody go and look at it and say, okay, it's, it's done.
Yeah. They have our guys go up and approve the connection. Yep.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is it possible to approve the project under conditions that the fees are paid?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the, when the fees are paid, the, the application comes legal.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, we understand, we're adding to the grant list.
Yes, we are, that's a wonderful. Liquor licenses.
Uh, we got, did you want to do the Sherman Allen water connection, too?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Let's do the Sherman Allen one, right there.
Uh, so Sherman v. Allen sent in a request, his came in on Friday. His request is for a greater, more allocation than what they currently have. They're increasing their flows by 1,211 gallons per day, both water and sewer. 1,211 sewers, 1,211 water. We did charge them the $2 increase for that, the one-time, the one-time fee. That came to $4,844, and they paid that fee.
What property was that?
How much? $1,844.
Worth on them.
You look for the cost?
Mm-hmm.
$4,844.
Where'd he, where'd he put this in?
It's the truck stop. And they're not building, they're, they're revamping the truck stop and the pump station. And since they did that, they have to use the new state guidelines for what that looks like, and the new state guidelines say they're using more water than, than what they previously thought.
Where does the $4,000 come in?
That's the $2, uh, $2 a gallon one-time system fee.
Oh, so it's two for each, $2 a gallon, three for each.
So Sherman Allen did pay the $4,000, they didn't pay the $10 application fee.
See if they can roll that in.
Yeah, I, I told him to, I told him to send me a check when he gets a chance.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second?
Yep, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I as well.
Okay, and this is for Bob as well.
Okay. Now we have some liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses, right?
So we'll start with the...
You've got a bunch of them.
I got a bunch of them.
I guess we're gonna have a new page.
Do you want me to just hand you the stack?
Well, I, I, do, do we have, we've been having some discussion around the Eagles Club?
Oh, I've requested.
And, and seeing how we have a gentleman standing back here to have to, to talk with, why don't we start with?
Sure.
With it, with the, uh, the request for the first class license?
David? So I, I asked, I asked David to come on down and talk just a little bit, uh, about the, uh, what had, what the Eagles had done to kind of remedy the, the situations down at the Eagles Club that we had last year.
And, and if I can say, 'cause I, I asked for this here, just to refresh everyone's memory, last year, we had issues around noise, dogs barking, the residents complained, came here, letter went to the parent organization, a letter was sent back to cease and desist. So seeing that the Eagles is, are back looking for some license fees, thought it would be good to, 'cause new, new, uh, leadership down there, that thought we'd be remiss if we didn't just have the discussion of, of...
We've had some younger gentlemen and some ladies, uh, kind of get out of hand. The dog issue, we didn't agree with either, um, but you can't say you can't bring your dogs. I mean, then there's potential lawsuit or whatever, and then they're getting the grand area involved also. We are coming up with some guidelines. We told them last year to check on your dogs, not just park, park your vehicles out beside the houses, you know, where the lot is right there, in close proximity, and then just come in and drink for four hours and not go check on them. That's not humane for the animals to be cooped up in a truck or a car with windows rolled half down while they're drinking. So hopefully we've got that curbed. If it does continue, then there will be a no-dog ban, period. It'll be what it is, and we'll face it at that time. The noise level, we did have some younger guys with motorcycles. Hopefully, we've got that curbed, 'cause I told them I was the one that started the motorcycle organization, and I have no problems ending it either. So it was up to them. Hopefully, towards the end of the year, we had that curbed pretty much. We did have a couple people that came in on their bikes from out of state, visiting from New York. When they left, of course, they revved the engines, and I was not around to, but I heard about it afterwards.
You also have one from Pumpney that's, apparently, he's the worst defender of all of them.
We, we've spoken to him, and he has toned it down. I did, last couple of rides, we've taken off from the park, 'cause we left earlier, earlier in the morning. I have called Jay a couple of times, and we've had rides leaving from Eagles, and I've called Mr. Adams. Hopefully, the eight-foot fence down the west side of the property will help alleviate the noise towards that direction, and then we're putting a split rail fence the rest of the way around, basically to mark off the boundaries, the way we're permitted right now for outside consumption. That will keep that. Mr. Adams did not like fences, I don't either, but that seems to make everybody happy, so we're hoping that...
That'll give you something to look at, so you know we're...
Yeah. So we don't have to run a rope up every time, you know, have somebody jumping over top rope like it's hopscotch or whatever, but, um, hopefully we have it curbed. If not, then the trustees says we'll have to start suspending people.
Yeah, 'cause they're gonna be wrong, I, I think, I mean, it's great having the pavilion and, and different things that, that we have going on there, we just need to understand we're in a residential neighborhood.
We're trying to get the younger people to realize that, but, you know, we're all once young ourselves at that, by that age, and, you know...
Younger than all the... Some of your, some of your problems are younger ones.
No, there's, there's a few that are the older ones. It, uh, hopefully, of course, trying to get them to change their ways is, you know, they're so ingrained in what they do for so long. But hopefully, with the new administration down there, we can get it, get it straightened around, like I say, if the thinking team is, is gonna lead to suspensions on their part.
I'll speak on your, your motorcycle rides. When you guys leave, there's no problem, because everybody's in a group and they're going out through, it's when they start coming back, and then they gotta go, you know, from the 22 to the club as fast as they can go, and that's when your problem starts. But as far as when your club leaves, it's not a problem, because everybody's pretty reasonable, and they're, I, when they leave, there's never a problem. It's just when some of them start coming back, individuals, that's when you start getting your problem.
Hopefully, we got this curbed, before the riding season starts, there'll be another, you know, put the thumb down and this is what it is, guys, either you abide to it or, that, and I was talking to Mr. Gunter the other day on the phone, when I told him I would come down. I'm gonna bring it to the trustees, if it's feasible with town, do we go half with you? And put some signs up, probably take three or four. About the noise level in that, in that area, we'd be more than happy to go halves. How you word it, you know, be up to however the town wants to word it. We'd be more than happy to, you know, go halves and get some noise level signs put up.
Yeah, I don't know if it's effective, it's, it's a people's timeline real quick, but I, I think that, I think the only thing that, that you'd really want to say to the trustees is that we rarely, we rarely talk to anybody about liquor licenses, and it's, it's a big enough exception that we felt that it was necessary, at least part of the board felt it was necessary, so. So I haven't heard, and I don't know that we've had any complaints later on in the year, it's been quiet, it quieted down after the hull blew at the beginning of the year, the beginning of the summer, but it's just a...
We've been shut down since the end of October anyways, so.
Yeah, well, that keeps it...
I, I'll just open it back up till April, May.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't look like that's gonna happen for a while, yeah. But anyways, I mean, it's, it's just duly noted that, that we, we ask, that, just talking, that we're concerned and we want everybody to be good neighbors, that's all.
Oh, you know, we're, I, I, you know, I talked to Ron all three or four times there, and, you know, we've, and he had, everything was legitimate, I mean, you know, I mean, I can't be there 24/7, so. And unless...
Most people have to be adults.
This brought to my attention, I don't know about it.
And people have to be adults, and it's, you know, it's not, not the end of the world, but it's worth talking about and getting, so we're not...
Oh, I agree.
So we're all ahead of it.
Okay, I just got a quick question. On one side of the paper, it says the Eagles Club has a first-class license. Well, in the motion, you got third-class license.
They have two. They have a third, a first, and an outside.
First class, we have a third-class club license, and then we have our consumption license.
Yeah, outside, outside consumption.
That one, that one, I'd like to discuss a little bit. I think that should be put on a, on a temporary basis until we find out what's gonna happen with the outside. You know, it's, just have them give us a call when they wanna do, go outside or something. I don't think it should be a blanket coverage for them for the, until we make sure that the outside projects are, 'cause they have gotten bad, the outside, and they never have before in the past. I've lived there for 30 years, and, and, you know, this summer was terrible, it was just plain terrible. So that's just my opinion, I mean, you know...
No, well, that's...
I mean, I don't have a problem with the other licenses.
We do, the Legion just asks for it.
They usually ask for it when they're gonna do it. But that was an exception.
You think that most of the noise problem is when it, when they're outside?
It's just, that's when it has been the issue. As far as, I mean, they've had parties in the, over the Eagles Club, and you don't, with a band in there, and you don't hear them. I mean, like I said, they've been good neighbors, like, as long as I've been there, except for this past year, I mean, this is when it got, but, I mean, that's just my suggestion, or, I guess it can just be, it can be just put in there if it gets to the point they can have your, that outside consumption license revoked. Is that something you can do?
I don't know if we, I don't know if we can get it...
I don't know if the town can revoke?
Right, once we, once we sign off on it, I don't know if we can revoke it.
That's why maybe you should do events, just have them give you a call when they're gonna have an event outside.
But I know there's...
I think the town manager can, can do that, I mean, if, as long as it...
This is a state thing, Jay. I wish I could do that by now.
No, 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 I mean...
For the outside consumption?
Outside consumption, I'm seeing.
No, that's not me.
Does that go to the state each time?
When, when we did our event downtown, we had to go to the state to get a special permit, and then for the...
Why are we giving them a permit to do it?
I'm sorry?
Why do we have to give them a permit to do it if they have to do it through the state?
We had to get a state, through the state.
The state looks to us for approval.
First.
Yeah.
So then, they look to see that there's, which is why the Eagles went to, um, an
outside consumption one, so they didn't have to do the, or all through it, but, you know...
Uh, you can hold, if the board wants to, you could hold off on the outside consumption, and I could talk to the state and see with, if we could revoke if there's trouble, if you want me to do that.
Let's just go on with it.
I, right...
If there's a problem, we'll just start, next year?
And the main thing we're, we're looking for, and it sounds like that's what you're telling us, is, um, that the Eagles have been very good neighbors, and they've been very good members of the community for what we've been doing in the past, it's just the last year has been, was really tough, and so we, all the help, we need...
I mean, we had, and Jay knows a few of the couple ones, 'cause you can basically tell by their voice of who they are when they're outside.
Yeah.
You can pick the voice up quickly.
Yeah.
And they had been spoken to in person last year, and they did, one stop coming in for a while, they got mad, and the other one, she did tone it down, so.
Well, on the other way of looking at it, too, everything was shut down for so long, you know, and then when they, they did get a chance to open up, and it was strictly outside for you guys, you know, and I mean, human nature did just let loose, I mean, it just, as long as everything's, as long as everybody recognizes what's going on...
The town has a speculation that at 7 o'clock, we are due to stop all outside functions, unless we call for permission.
And I mean, it's, I think at least you're on, you're heading in the right direction, let's put it that way, I mean, at least you're trying, and...
Well, we've, we've got some new trustees in here that actually care about what's going on down there.
So when you do this, do you have to do each license individually?
It's all on... You always have, I, I don't think it would be a problem to...
Just say the first class, third class, and outside consumption?
And then, yeah, say all the names for those classes.
Right, is that just the three they've got?
No, we, we gotta do each one of these individually.
We always have, but...
They all get signed individually.
I make a motion for the first-class license for the Eagles.
No, 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 individually, I think Joe was saying each of all the...
Yeah, no, but I was just saying for the Eagles Club.
Just do the Eagles Club, and then we'll do the stores.
We do, we say first-class license, third-class license, and outside consumption.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, now, I am not seeing, let's see, now that we've said that, this just is first, all this is first class.
There's, there's two, there's two more for, but they're, they're all in order right now.
During the order that which would be the most, that would be coming out.
Yeah, okay, well, then, we're gonna do it individually, so this is for the first-class license.
All right, and first-class license.
All right, is there a second?
Yeah, I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good to go. Thanks, thanks. You're good. All right, uh, let's see if I can find the other ones for the Eagles here.
The next one, are we gonna do the second class right in order?
Yeah, we'll get it, who's the plan? All right, I'll, I'll, here we go.
The next one is a third class, if you're trying to do all, all the Eagles.
Here's the Eagles. Uh, and this is a third-class club license.
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That was third-class club.
And the last one, we have, should be the consumption.
And that would be the outside... And that would be the outside consumption permit.
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're good to go. All right. Thanks for coming in too. You're welcome to stay. Have a seat. Okay. All right, uh, there are more. Stewart Shop for a second-class license.
Motion for it.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Good there. And this is Walgreen, second-class license.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, um. SW Walk Corporation doing business as Liberty Market, I think it was. Yep, Liberty Street Market. Second class.
Motion, do it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty then. Brockton Corporation doing business as Shaw's Beer and Wine. Second class. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess the, uh, question is, is these are all, these are all, uh. Up and up on their taxes and their water and. Second-class license for Midway Oil doing business as Fairhaven Mobile.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
And, oh, sorry. Second-class license for RL Valley Maple Fields at Fairhaven.
So move.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that is all of them for tonight.
So really, the only ones that aren't done are Camassides and Fairhaven.
And the Legion.
And the Legion. What are these due?
Usually we don't see these coming in until like April and May. This, this is early for these.
It may be fiscal year, actually, when they get, they actually get their license. I don't know that, to be honest with you. I've never actually looked at a liquor license and. All right. Um, any, anybody want to speak on any of the parking lot issues?
The, the sewer abatement policy, uh, I have a solid draft done. I didn't get it done in time for the Thursday packet, is just what it was. Uh, but that, that, that is ready to go. Zoning regulations, uh, the zoning board has decided not to meet during COVID, so there is no movement on that.
Okay. Um, for what it's worth, I had to get a haircut the other night. So I, uh. I mean, I, I said, as long as you're handing out money, we need a bridge. Down at the outlet. I was told that most of that money is going for education, so. I said, well, you know, just if you're thinking that way. I didn't, I don't, I didn't get a, you know, a feeling of confidence.
You didn't get rich.
Yeah, there's.
Don't think we're getting rich.
No, Fairhaven's not getting rich. I said, we only need 500,000 out of 100 million, so.
Yeah.
Think our future is getting wet for a while, Bob.
Yeah, it didn't sound like it was a big priority, or was going to be pushed as a big priority. Anything else? If not, we'll go to Board Roundtable.
Nothing?
Why are we salting the high school parking lot?
Salting the high school parking lot? Uh, they buy, so the deal with that is they buy us a load of salt and then we'll spread it.
But. We have nothing to do with the high school. We have no say in what goes on up there. We're considered a private contractor by doing it that way. And. If you read the insurance policies for private contractor. If somebody, if you salt up there and sand it, and somebody slips and fall, you're liable for them. So I would suggest that they've got a sander up there, they can come down and let the town load their sander. And let them do it. I don't think the town, I mean, that's another liability factor. We don't need any more liability factors. I mean, it's, they have the equipment to salt, so.
All right.
And then on the new truck, of course, I was, I was against the truck to begin with, but I don't think it was necessary to buy a four-door truck. You could have saved about close to $7,000 by buying a conventional cab truck. And. I don't know who wrote the specs up for this truck, or I don't know who did it. But I think it's time before anything goes out to bid. That we have some people look at bids to see what's going on there. There is no reason for a four-door truck here. I mean, the joke is now we got a truck that sweeps five. You know, so I just want to point that out. I mean, it was $7,000.
Was it, huh? Was it extra, that's my question. I mean, we, we got the fact, we knew what we were getting. I don't ever remember hearing about a four-door, but I, but we, we said X amount of dollars to spend. So I wasn't so concerned because they can only spend X amount of dollars.
Yeah, but still, if you can save $7,000 on purchase, just because you say you can spend 60,000 or 7,000, you shouldn't have them.
Well, what I'm saying is, did we spend that extra seven?
You had to if you bought one.
Well, not necessarily, if they told us what they were going to give us. And what we were going to pay for. I just don't know exactly what.
I know the difference when I was going to buy a truck. If I bought a four-door truck, it was between 6 and 7,000 more.
Well, I get that, I, I just.
Back in July, when, when we looked at the three bids, we said not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
63,525, I think we got just one heck of a deal. On a, on a.
Saying, I think there should be looked over better. I don't think we should, I don't think any board should put, or don't spend over this amount of money. Let's get some bids out. And see what people can come in, and then you can regulate on what you want to do. Because if you give them permission to spend 70,000, they're going to spend 69,500.
Well, that's true.
And that's, that always happens. I just, you know, put your bids out and see what you've got. If, if, if you've got people that are bidding, they're going to bid. If they want to sell a truck, they're going to bid as cheap as they can. And even the bidders know that you've got 70,000. They're going to be, just like, I, I have the same feeling when we bid out a project. They know how much money's here to spend.
Oh, it's awful.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm not trying to be a, whatever, but I, I just feel that's the way it is.
If, Jay, if it makes you feel any better, which I probably won't, but, um, we, we did talk to three dealerships and got the state contract price. And that truck, um. We, we paid for the truck alone, just, just the truck, 43,000. Just that big, I mean, those trucks, those trucks.
Extra to put everything on it.
Um, the box was 13 and the plow was six, I think, or, or something along those lines, but.
I'm just saying, I think in the future. Should be a little more cautious on where our money's going. And then we have a policy here about smoking and vehicles and stuff. When is that ever going to be? Put in force?
I've, uh, this, I talk to the guys periodically about it. I haven't caught anybody, but we have, uh, just like the, um, PPE for boots, the cleats to wear on slippery ice. I sent that out to, for staff to sign that, so they understand they have to wear those cleats. Same with the smoking policy, I just sent that out last week. Uh, everybody received another copy and they've signed it, and it's now in their files again. If anybody's caught smoking in the equipment or in any of the buildings, there, there will be time off. That costs, it, it's hard to catch this.
If you watch them when they're plowing.
Yeah.
There's a couple of them, every time you see them, they've got a cigarette in their mouth as well. And then my other thing is this slush fund that we have here. Where if money isn't spent, it goes into this fund. The last year, when we were talking about the concerts in the park and the Memorial Day Parade, it didn't take place. When I brought the issue up, I thought that money is going to be put back aside so it can be put in this year's budget, so we didn't have to add more money to the budget. And it went into the slush fund. I don't know what you call it, I'm calling it a slush fund. We're going to end up the same way we did before with it.
Carry forward.
Well, and we're taxing the people twice, is what I'm saying. I mean, right now, we put in again for the concerts in the park. The money was there and it wasn't spent. So we taxed the people a second time for the same, same stuff. And it, to me, that should have came back out of there and show it as a revenue toward this year's budget. Which would have knocked our, we'd have gotten close to 100,000 by doing that. And I just don't want to see us end up with a million dollars worth of slush fund like we did quite a few years ago. And then watch previous boards buy down the tax rate with that money, and now, that's why our tax rate's so high, because we didn't come up gradually. And we've got slammed with the, with the higher tax rates. So just my thought, that's all. That's all I got, I guess.
Jeff?
I'm good. Dylan, I have one small thing. Over the weekend, uh, Ice Fisherman blocked Lynn Howard's road. And, uh, I wondered if there was a way we could get a sign, like a no-parking sign, just at the end of the road, so that that road doesn't get blocked.
Yeah, Jeff, I talked to Lynn, actually Lynn came in today, I talked to her twice. Uh, we're looking into signs and the police are cognizant of the, uh, the concern, so they're taking, they're watching it too.
Just a reminder, no gasoline-operated machines of any kind in the Watershed area.
Right.
Ice hogs and.
They had gas in that truck to get there, though. Does that count?
Well, they weren't, they weren't in, they weren't in the Watershed, they were down a block in Lynn's road.
Right, right outside of the gate of the Watershed plant, right there.
That's not good, that's a road.
That's a road.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Um. Got a couple of, um. Not anything we can do about it, but Fairhaven Concern is losing their, their director. And she's going to United Way, which is a great step for her. She's been a fantastic director for Fairhaven Concern.
Is she, is she going to work part-time here or not? She's gone totally?
She's going to be full-time at United Way.
Okay.
That's, that's my.
Don't we have somebody kind of taking her place, Bob?
I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know anything about it, just, I just, it's, uh, it's a loss for Fairhaven.
She has done an excellent job.
She's been good. And we should acknowledge that it, I don't know what our physical capacity is, not much, but it's nice that it's there. Yeah. Where, where are we as far as upgrading computers in the town in general? Where, who do we have left to do? We've seen, we're kind of piecemeal and, and you, you did the server, right?
I, I think everybody is upgraded. Yeah, the entire town now. Which.
Even like the transfer station and all of them, where they got the computers and stuff down there?
Yeah, so the transfer station, they got a new laptop that just came online. There was something wrong with the, um, the software, they had to upgrade the software from the old to the new, and we just got that upgraded. Uh, DPW has one computer down at their shop that was, that was replaced, I think he said, two years ago. Uh, they just got a couple new computers back at the police department, and then the entire town staff is.
Everybody's good.
We got all, no one threw a grant or something, didn't we get some money toward computers or something?
All COVID money.
All COVID.
No match, that's just, they just threw money at the, the television, laptops.
We did.
Power door.
There is more coming, they're talking about a mini. Kind of a thing from the state. They have 100 million dollars to, or 90 million dollars to spend. Before the next COVID relief package comes through. And they, they expect to get a billion dollars from that. From that, the, the state of Vermont is expecting that kind of money.
I could go lower.
So. Start talking to people and, and, you know, make sure they know Fairhaven's around.
Yeah, sure will.
I mean, it, it's, it's, uh. They're going to do it with one-time projects, they're going to do, and like I said before, they're, they're, they're concentrating on education stuff. Um, but it's not, you know, all they can tell us is no.
It's free to ask.
Yep.
They mentioned there might be money like for a town garage in ours, area because of the pollution and the castle.
Yeah, that's.
It ends up in white champagne, so.
That'd be great. And, um, in, in scheduling a procedure, I'm having on March 1st. I may not be on top of my game when I get, when it gets to be time to be running the show, so.
Might make, might make you better.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking it might, it might, it might make me more honest. That's probably not a good thing. If I, if I decide to go on, stay home and be online, then we'll have to do that, but I mean, and I'm, I wouldn't. We don't have to worry about it because we have the moderator anyway, so there wouldn't be a chair.
I was going to ask, so SEAL doesn't necessarily have to be the moderator, does the board want SEAL to be?
No, no, she has to be the moderator.
She's elected moderator.
She, there was a new, she called yesterday and said there was something new where, she didn't moderate the school. So, but if the board wants her to, she said she would like to.
I think she should.
I think she should, I, I would appreciate it if she did.
Just like I would like to thank their representative, uh, Campfield and Helm, well.
They're going to.
Zoom in or.
They're going to do a statement each. And I'm not sure if they're zooming that, I think they're zooming that, is what I, what I got from.
We lost Jeff.
Uh-oh, where'd you go, Jeff?
Um, they, I talked to, uh, Mr. Campfield, and he said he was going to send something over.
Oh.
So I don't know if that's changed, but that was a few weeks ago.
Okay, I thought they were going to zoom in, but they may not. And Bob has trouble with that anyway, so. All right. Anything else, uh, expenditure, financial stuff? Jeff, are you there?
No, I think we.
No, we lost Jeff.
We lost him.
He's gone, gone.
He's just gone. Gave up, huh?
He gave up. Um, where's the packet?
Do you want to, just, I can give you the.
You read it?
Pay the warrants.
Oh, there you go.
You want the payroll, uh, was, uh, 27,999 dollars and 58 cents.
That's the motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to pay the warrants of 657,806 dollars and 70 cents. And before you go, there was a school payment, big school payment in that, which was the.
500.
The bulk of that.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Checkbook status?
I don't know.
That we don't know.
I'll get it, bear with me. Your checkbook status is $2 right now.
It was, it was surprisingly high. Uh, 127,720 dollars and 58 cents.
Huh, not bad.
We, we haven't seen the drop in tax payments like we expected. It's, it's stayed pretty steady.
Well, there's nothing wrong with that.
No, it's, our revenues are solid right now.
All right, uh. We've got an executive session. Yep?
I'll make a motion that we go into a. I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for town manager evaluations under 1 DSA 313A3. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thanks for coming, Paul.
Thanks for coming in, Dave.